Let's call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Auburn School Committee. This meeting is being recorded. I would ask if there's anyone else recording this meeting? Seeing no one, if you'd please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all. All right. Good evening, everyone. So, do we have any citizens' comments this evening? No? Just spectators? All right. That's great. I know we do have some special recognitions, and for that, I will turn it over to Dr. Hanfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We actually, we have one that's listed here, and then I'll, we have a second one, but I'll bring that up after we speak with Nathan. So, joining us via Zoom is Mr. Nathan Castellano, a current 7th grader at AMS, and everybody's favorite middle school principal, Mr. Desto. And we're here to, I guess, congratulate, celebrate, admire.
Thank.
Nathan's heroic efforts back, I believe, the end of August, early September, where he saved a young man who was drowning in a pool. This was brought to my attention, and I thought, this is the type of thing that we want to be promoting amongst our, everyone, but especially our young people. So, Nathan has so graciously joined us this evening, and, hi Nathan, how are you?
Aye.
It's nice to see you. We apologize for the last meeting that we had to cancel, but why don't you tell us a little bit about what happened and how you were involved?
Okay. So, I was at Pine Acres, a couple months ago, like, three months ago. And we went swimming in a pool at Pine Acres, and we were playing around like a mushroom-looking waterfall thing. And then we went to the deeper side, and the kid started following us. I thought he was part of our group or something like that, so, like, called for his age. And then he started splashing, and I'm like, is he like trying to play with us or something like that? And then he started coughing. So, I'm like, oh yeah, I think he's drowning. So, I grabbed him, once the mother, and then the mother jumped in, and I just handed it to her.
And, that's awesome. So, just to be clear, so this was, was this a Boy Scout outing that you were part of?
Yes, it was.
Okay. So, this was a Boy Scout outing at Pine Acres. You gentlemen were going swimming, and you saw somebody else in the pool that wasn't part of your group?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Excellent. I just wanted to make sure we had the story right. Well, that's excellent. I know, I'm sure the committee has a few words, but I'm sure that that mom and that young man were very grateful for your quick thinking and your bravery. That's a very heroic thing that you did, so I applaud you for your efforts. Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nathan, good evening. Good to see you again. I didn't know if Mr. Desto wanted to share anything about Nathan with us before we share our remarks.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Scobie. Nathan, characteristically here, is being quite humble. The way I found out about it is one of his friends approached me. Nathan, I probably never would've known, but one of his friends approached me and said, "Mr. Desto, can you say something about Nathan on the announcement this morning?" And I said, "Well, is it his birthday or something?" You know, I wasn't sure what was going on. And then he told me the story, and I said, "Absolutely, that's worthy of, at the very least, morning announcement material." But I wanted to make sure that, I verified the story with his scout leader first. And so, his scout leader, Nathan, is it David Keys?
Yes.
Okay. Sent me an email and verified the story, and Nathan kind of told it on the low end. He actually, you know, kind of jumped into the deep end of the water to pick this kid up, and it was a little kid. And so, it was really a brave thing. And I was thinking how, so many times, grownups and kids nowadays, their first reaction to something like that is to get the phone out and start taping it. And we didn't even think he just jumped right into the water. So, we're very proud of him. We made an announcement. We bought him a pizza with two of his buddies on a Friday, even though I don't agree with the kind of pizza they eat. Too many toppings for my taste. Nathan's got very advanced taste in pizza. It's my great honor to our school, to his family, to the town of Auburn in general, and we're really proud of him.
Thank you for those kind words, Mr. Desto. And I would echo those sentiments. What a fantastic thing. Do we have anything I would like to say to Nathan besides a simple congratulations?
Well, I'd like to say thank you, because so many times, little kids get in trouble, and the people that are supposed to be watching them get sidetracked, and they don't notice what's happening. So, your alertness made all the difference in the world, and thank you so much for that. That was really wonderful.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, Nathan, I just want to congratulate you, and I've watched you grow up. I'm so proud of you, and your parents have done a great job with you so far. And I just hope that you stay aware like you did, and keep it up, and always be helpful.
Thanks.
Yeah, it's just another example of, you know, things to be proud of for the Auburn community. You know, I'm not surprised to hear that you did this, you know, knowing your family. But congratulations, and thank you, thank you, for letting us know too, Mr. Desto. Thanks for bringing us up. You know, we need to hear, we need to hear feel-good stories like this a lot, and especially, you know, show other kids that it's okay to jump in and help, you know, that's the third thing to do. Job well done.
Can I just add one more thing? Sorry, Dr. Chair.
Sure.
Nathan, I actually found out from Caitlin, who came home from school and told me, and she said, "Nathan is famous. Oh my gosh, mommy, he saved a life." So, she's wanting to let you know that, um...
It's an enemy material.
That you're famous.
Dr. McCrillis, did you have anything?
Did you get any badges for this? Are there like rescue badges?
No.
No? Oh. You should, because that's amazing. I mean, I love the feel-good stories, but really, it's, you know, this kid couldn't, could've died, and you doing that was just something you didn't have to do. I think if you didn't do it, no one would've thought twice, but you did. And in a split second, you saved a little kid's life, and I think that's amazing. Great job.
Thank you. Thanks.
Nathan, to echo the sentiments of the rest of the committee, yes, this is, this is very impressive, and also, in getting to know you and the family over the years, I'm not surprised at all. Regarding Mrs. Harrington's comments about your family doing very well with you so far as if they weren't going to continue, I kind of question that a little bit. Just so you know, I have a good sense that your family's going to continue to mold you as the great young man that you are. So, no, we're all very proud of you. I think a lot of adults in town could probably learn a lesson from you, how we're supposed to be looking out for our neighbors, looking out for those who can't help themselves. It's just a fantastic example of what a wonderful person you're going to end up being, because I know that you're the kind of guy that's, that's looking to help people, and that's very impressive to do what you did at such a young age. So, congratulations. I'm so glad that you could show up tonight.
Thank you for inviting me.
You're very welcome. Say hello to the family from all of us.
Okay.
And if you want to go do your homework now or something, I guess, you could go ahead and do that.
Okay. I will.
These meetings are very boring, Nathan. I'm not going to lie to you. Have a nice evening, my friend.
You too.
Take care. Bye.
Thank you, Nathan. Thank you, Mr. Desto.
Thank you, Mr. Desto.
Mr. Chair, also, under special recognitions, and this probably will be a continuous one, but notified earlier this week that our longtime school resource officer, Officer Brian Kennedy, is in line for a promotion this coming Monday to provisional sergeant, and will be taking over full sergeant duties in December when Sergeant Freddie LaFlash enjoys his retirement. So, Officer Kennedy spoke, had spoken to me about this earlier this week. Originally, it was going to be a November 15th timeline, but due to needs in the department, it's been accelerated, and so he will be sworn in as a provisional sergeant on Monday. He will continue to be available to us while he and Chief Sloukas interview prospective candidates, and ultimately succeed who will, you know, who will replace him in our schools. But I, Brian, Officer Kennedy, you know, he's, he's, he's been instrumental in so many things that have gone on in these schools during my tenure, you know, in the 17 years I've been here. He's done a tremendous amount, as has, you know, Jay Johnson before him in the SRO role. And so, there'll be a little bit more of a celebration for him, whether he realizes it or not, coming, you know, and I probably, maybe in our mid-November meeting, once he's had his swearing-in ceremony and things like that. But to, you know, appropriately thank him for his, his time and efforts that have gone far beyond his shift, you know, his shift time. He's always been there, seven days a week, 24 hours a day. Never mattered. If I needed him, called him, and I know that that was the experience a lot of us have. So, tremendous public servant, couldn't be happier for him, and then, and I'm sure he'll excel in his new role, but really just wanted to bring that to the committee's attention as we brought it to the principal's attention earlier this morning in a meeting. So, like, we'll celebrate him probably again soon.
Very well said. Any comments?
No, he's just been the best. He was, he was, I think, yeah, he was there even when I was teaching, so he's been there a long time, and so, you can almost count on him.
Yeah. No, tremendous.
Yeah. I would say from, from day one in the district, when I first met him and watched the way he interacted with the kids, just so impressive. And then throughout the years, of course, getting to know him, and as you said, Dr. Hanfield, being able to reach him anytime about anything. And that's, that's a good feeling when you're talking about someone who's looking after your children. It's, you know they're in good hands. We always know they're in good hands with, with the staff at Auburn Schools, but, but that little, little extra layer of protection with Brian Kennedy. I'm sure we're going to get another great candidate, but yeah, he'll be greatly missed, at least at the school level. I'm sure we'll still see him around town. So, yeah, congratulations, Brian. All right. I would now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of 9:22:21.
I'll make that motion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That is a vote. Thank you. And we now move on to the student representatives' report. Jasmine and Ally, welcome. Can you hear me, Jasmine?
Yep.
I can't hear you.
Hi there. How is everyone?
Just watching a plumbing video, sorry.
Are you watching a how-to plumbing video? That's what Dr. Hanfield said.
I am. If you, if you recall last year, I did break my faucet in the kitchen. I'm actually wearing how to fix that right now. No, I'm all, I'm all here. So, I guess, I guess I was stuck. So, right now, I'm sure as all of you are aware, the high school was kind of in a tricky position with COVID these past few weeks, but luckily, we're starting to bounce back. I know the football team and soccer team are currently recovering. I believe that the football team has a game on Saturday at 1:00, so that's good, because they haven't been allowed to play for a couple weeks now due to COVID. So, I know that with COVID, it's been tricky, but that's, I think, kind of getting taken care of again and getting things under control. As for things going on at school, I know the student council right now is doing a lot for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. They're selling bracelets, handmade bracelets and things like that to raise money for the Breast Cancer Awareness Foundation, which is great. And it really gets everybody involved, because not only are they selling them, but like I said, they're making them themselves, which is really nice, just to see the effort that they're putting in for this. And I know at school right now, seniors are in crunch time, at least those who are doing early action. I know that that's coming up in a couple weeks, so the seniors are really focused on their future right now. And the underclassmen just had their PSATs, which is, I guess, exciting. I remember, they weren't exciting when I was taking them, but looking back, it's fine. So, I know that there is, there's that. So, that's my question. I don't want to take anything from Ally, so she has something to say. So, things are looking pretty good, and it's been a good half of the first semester, so I'm looking forward to the rest and just enjoying what's to come.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Ally?
Of course. Yeah, Jasmine did a great job covering a lot of things that I was considering talking about, but we just, thankfully, we're getting better with the COVID situation. I'm on the girls varsity soccer team, so unfortunately, we lost a few weeks of our season, but we're trying to make up all the games that we missed, and we started practicing again. And I know the football team has just gotten back on track as well. For Breast Cancer Awareness Week, we also have a pinkout day this Friday, just to show awareness, as well as all the money that we're raising through the bracelets. And I took PSATs as an underclassman last Wednesday, so I thought that those went pretty well, and they're a good way to prep for the SATs in the spring.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions for Ally or Jasmine? Seeing none. Ally, I would, I would just be careful that Jasmine doesn't try to steal any more of the show from you, because she tends to just keep taking a little bit more, and then you're not going to have anything to say next time. You might want to have a talk with her. No, seriously, thank you both. Your reports are always awesome. We look forward to them. We look forward to hearing from a student viewpoint what's happening at the high school. So, look forward to seeing you next time, and have a great couple weeks.
Thank you, you too. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Bye. Have a nice evening.
Good night.
Have a great night.
Good night.
Good kids. All right. We now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening to everyone officially. First up on the unfinished business is the ongoing COVID update. As the girls mentioned, you know, we had an unfortunate situation in Auburn High School relative to a COVID outbreak that involved a number of teachers, coaching staff, students, and, you know, many members of the football team. The girls alluded to the fact that we had some tangentially related to soccer, and then we just, we had other staff that just got sick. You know, we've, we've gotten through, I think, the worst of it. Fingers crossed. And, you know, we've, we've reviewed the circumstances that potentially could have enabled this to take place, and we believe that, you know, we've put in appropriate corrective action as it relates to the operation of athletics to protect against this happening moving forward, and we continue to monitor the situation daily. I think the one part about this that really made things difficult was the amount of close contacts that were impacted by this. We had over 100 students, unfortunately, majority of which belonged to the football team, but still, you know, having to quarantine because we didn't have test and stay in place yet. Dr. Chamberlain will talk about test and stay. Happy to report that we do have it up and going as of last Wednesday. She'll talk more about that. But yeah, unfortunate situation, and, you know, it was what I have said to many people, it was our provincedown, in the sense that I think we fell into a false sense of security with doing everything outside. Clearly, what we've found out is that even when you're outside, it's still too early to let your guard down as it relates to, you know, being unmasked, not taking appropriate social distance precautions, things of that nature. The other part of this that was somewhat alarming to us was the number of vaccinated folks that were becoming ill with COVID. Up until the issue at the high school, largely, we were seeing unvaccinated people getting COVID. We had, we saw some isolated breakthrough cases, but as of today, we have, we've had 109 total cases of COVID in the district. 72 of those individuals were unvaccinated, 26 were vaccinated, and 11 were partially vaccinated. And the issue at the high school, when you look at the 26 vaccinated individuals, about 18 of that 26 are tied to the high school situation. So, that aside, I think the numbers are still pretty compelling as it relates to, you know, the numbers of people who are unvaccinated that are getting COVID. But what's alarming, I think, a little bit, are the number of vaccinated people that we saw in such a small window come down with it. And so, I think, you know, we're not virologists, but as we've studied this, I think what we're seeing is we're seeing people, fully vaccinated staff, who are on the tail end of their initial vaccinations. Clearly, the viral load that's out there is pretty high, and, you know, vaccinations aren't a 100% cure-all, that you're not going to, you know, you're not going to get COVID. And so, I think what we're seeing is, in some cases where there's a high concentration of viral load, that it's overrunning people's defenses as it relates to the efficacy of the vaccine that they have. And so, many of them are due for booster shots, the adults, and, you know, and we'll be seeking those out. But it's really given us pause, to stop and think about kind of where we are, just, I think, in general with COVID. People have to remember that the, the policies that, that we enacted in the schools were based on information that we had in August. Things are changing, and unfortunately, I think we're right in the crux of the change. And so, it really is giving us pause in terms of rethinking how we're doing things. So, like I said, we've, we believe we've taken the appropriate, you know, corrective action with athletics. We're continuing to review how we're doing things, you know, in school operations in general, and we'll continue to see how things move into the fall. But again, unfortunate, but like I said, hopefully, we're on the backside of it, and that's, that's a good thing. So, that's where we are with that. And Dr. Chamberlain will talk more COVID-related stuff a little bit later. I don't want to totally steal all of the thunder. Related to COVID, state mask extension, you probably are aware. Commissioner Riley announced that the state's mask extension is continuing through at least November the 1st. I know that there has been, you know, discussion on television, most notably, I believe, Hopkinton High School, or, excuse me, Hopkington Public Schools and the Ashland Public Schools have, you know, hit the 80% threshold that the state was looking for, and so now they have the ability, if they, you know, elect to, you know, to go to a differentiated masking policy, that's, that's great. But the majority of the 277 school districts that exist, you know, have not, have not supplied any attestation forms. I do not believe many of the districts in the, in the state are looking to move toward a mask differentiation policy. You know, in speaking with the commissioner personally last week, you know, what we saw here in Auburn two weeks ago at the high school is not uncommon across the state. You know, his exact words to me were, you know, the, you're transparent, you have the courage to be transparent. Many districts don't take that approach. And so, they are seeing these numbers, because we report these numbers in every week to the department, and they're seeing much of the same that we're talking about here in Auburn. They're seeing it in other school districts. So, whether or not, you know, there'll be a change in mask policy at the state level, I don't know. There was a meeting yesterday at the state level with the Board of Education, and I know that this was discussed, but we have yet to hear what, if any, change in practice will be recommended by Desi. We're also awaiting winter athletic guidance too, and we anticipate that that was going to be tighter and, and more in line with what we saw last year, due to the increased numbers that they're seeing from data reported by districts. So, we'll stay tuned in terms of what happens there.
Thank you for that. Any comments?
Through the chair. Just a question on Hopkinton. Are they requiring their staff to be vaccinated? Is that how they got so high, or?
I don't, I don't believe so. I don't believe so. I don't believe that that was a mandate in those districts. I believe that it was just something that they elected to do. I know Dr. Chamberlain will speak more about getting firm number, our attempts to get firm numbers a little bit later. I can tell you that, you know, right now, you know, it says in the packet here, you know, as of October 4th, it was a 50, it was like 50% vaccinated, 50% uncertain or not reported. We know that from speaking with the union yesterday, that some people just were not comfortable sending their information through ZipSlip, which was the original way that we had asked them to do it. But we had also told them at the same time that if they didn't want to do that, they could also supply their information to their school nurse, and many just haven't done that. So, we're, we're working to get an accurate number. We, we know from the numbers of people that went and got vaccinated last year, we have a pretty good approximation that that number is extremely high. But until we can physically see the actual document, you know, the actual, you know, card, you know, we don't want to come out with a real number. I mean, it would be easy for us to take the amount of people that we know took a day to go get vaccinated and divide it, right? And just come up with a percentage. But we want to actually see, visually see and confirm the vaccination card. So, so we're working to get to that number. But I don't believe, Dr. McCrillis, to your, your question, I do not believe that that was the case.
Okay.
Actually, just have one question, just because you brought up winter activities.
Sure.
And, and the number of close contacts being kind of high in this last spate with high school. However, a lot of those kids are all eating outdoors. Is there a plan to, I guess, more closely monitor what's happening at lunchtime as we move indoors?
Yes.
Okay. Just because I know right now, they're on the field, so you kind of probably wouldn't need to monitor that.
Yeah. No, that's a great, yeah, no, that's a great question. And so, that's, that's part of the, what we're continuing to monitor, is we're looking at, you know, I mean, as you know, Dr. Chamberlain and I, we're, we're at the high school exclusively over the last week or so, and it gave us an opportunity to really do some observations and, and, you know, and come away with some wonderings, and we're working through that right now with the high school administration. But yes, I anticipate that there's going to be, you know, some, some, some changes in practice to guard against, you know, as we start to move more indoors. I do believe the high school administration has already started addressing the student body around proper mask-wearing, et cetera, et cetera, in terms of, you know, what will, what will turn around and become, you know, kind of standard operating procedure in the hallways and classrooms and cafeteria. That's yet to be determined, but that, that conversation is, is happening now with the anticipation of cooler weather coming.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other comments? Seeing none. Moving on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, we've talked about this a couple of times already, relative to special town meeting. Just as a reminder, on October the 26th, we are having a special town meeting. I have given to you the full warrant articles from the town, and there's also the three that we have in place. Article five, relative to the proposed parking lot expansion slash kind of traffic reconfiguration at Bryn Mawr, we are postponing indefinitely until May. The reason for that is, what we're trying to do, is we're trying to take monies that were appropriated at town meeting last May for building rehab and maintenance, that was going to go toward HVAC accelerated repairs, and we're trying to repurpose that money and put it towards this, this project at, at Bryn Mawr. The issue that we're having right now is that we, that money hasn't been borrowed yet, and we can't go to town meeting and ask them to repurpose money we don't have yet. So, we're kind of in this, this, a little bit, I don't want to say quandary, but we're kind of just a little bit, you know, we're just trying to figure out what's the right approach to, to deal with that at this time. So, we just legally, we can't go forward and ask town meeting or make a presentation because of the way it's set up. So, we have unanimous approval for the other two articles, which is the reduction in Medicaid from 150 to 100, and then the additional monies that have come in for homeless transportation from both Select and Finance. So, those two should be fine, but we'll postpone indefinitely on the other, and we'll just, we'll work out the logistics of it with, with town administration and appropriate boards, and we'll look at it in May. It's not a big deal for us to postpone this indefinitely. The money that we're looking at replacing the building repair and maintenance is in the ESAR III that we've talked about before, that those funds have been, right now, kind of, you know, put aside, and those funds don't have to be expended until June of '24. So, we have time to, to work through this a little bit, so everything should be fine on that front. Just continue discussion and make sure we follow the appropriate procedures and processes. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
I do have a question.
Go ahead, go.
Dr. Hanfield, I drove by Bryn Mawr School the other day, and everywhere you look, there's no parking signs.
Right.
So, is this parking lot for parents to pick up their, their children? Is that what the problem is?
Yeah, so, so it's really, it's a couple, it's a couple, there's a couple issues here. One is the... issues here. One is the, the amount of vehicles that are parked on either side of the road during arrival and dismissal. So that's a real safety concern for traffic trying to pass through. So that's one issue. The second issue is that we have an ADA, American Disabilities Act study that was conducted, I think, two or three years ago, predates my existence in this chair. But we were looking at the Bryn Mar facility, and as we were looking at making sure that the ADA rules and regulations and Bryn Mar was compliant, we need some additional handicap parking in, in, in that area. So we already have some monies, as you know, set aside for parking lot expansion. So with the ESER III monies coming in, and having money in there targeted for HVAC repair, or at least that's some of the, kind of the finite uses that we can, we can utilize those funds for, it gave us the idea that if we could take the building repair money appropriated last May, that we could perhaps deal with two issues at the same time, not, but it wouldn't cost the town, if town meeting appropriated it, it wouldn't cost them, you know, the parking lot expansion and the HVAC. So what we're looking to do is expand the parking lot to address some of the ADA concerns, put more parking in there to help alleviate partly the parking on the side streets, it's why there are no parking signs there. But the other concern that we have is, what do we do with those vehicles, right? So at the Bryn Mar Ball Field site, for years and years and years, cars have always parked kind of in that grassy strip that runs somewhat perpendicular to the field. What we'd like to do is, you know, go through the appropriate channels, we'd like to pave that and make it an actual parking lot. And then we'd like to run some, some, I guess, a couple of lanes, parallel to three ninety-five, that would then tie into the Bryn Mar driveway. So families could come in and stage their vehicles in that parking area, but they could also stage them in kind of that, what would look like a C going on the outside of the athletic fields. We're not looking or proposing that we're to, you know, pave that entire area. We're just looking to find a way to help the parking issue, but then extend it around so that it would give vehicles an opportunity, parents could queue in that field area and then come out onto, you know, come out onto the road. So we feel it makes sense. It's not necessarily a, you know, traffic piece, per se, it's just more of, you know, it's just messy during ti, during different times of the, of the day. The other part of it, too, is that we feel it could have benefit, you know, if there are, for, as an overflow parking site for Swanson Road. And I think that's where some of the confusion comes in. People think, when we say Bryn Mar, Swanson Road, it's really Bryn Mar. But doing that work would allow Swanson Road to have some overflow parking. And it would also, I think, allow the townspeople, you know, an area to where they could walk on a paved surface if, you know, in off-hours. So there's a variety of uses for it, but we're just trying to capitalize on what we think is a need. And, and that's really what it is. So it started as the parking lot expansion, but then as we started looking at things that were really highlighted by COVID and the excessive traffic in that area, we, we thought that this might be a, you know, an appropriate way to, to address it. So.
So until that happens, what do the parents do that are going there to pick up their children?
Well, if you, if you drive kind of over where the Montessori building is, or you go up some side streets, you see vehicles dump there, you know, I mean, even though those signs are up.
Say, yeah.
I mean, they just, they have nowhere to go, you know, and so.
And those aren't official signs anyhow, those are, look more like.
Well, the police department put those up.
Oh, they did?
They did, yes. They put those up. And just because, you know, last spring, it was just, it was untenable. I mean, cars were everywhere, buses couldn't get up or down, people who were trying to, you know, proceed through the area, you know, were just getting gridlocked in traffic. You know, it was, it's just a difficult spot, and it has been for a really long time.
Yeah.
And it really.
And with little kids, you can't just have them walk wherever.
Yeah, correct.
A lot of times, I'm sure the parents wanna.
Correct.
Hold their child's hand and walk them to the car.
Yeah. And the difficulty with the two, you know, when that switched from being a middle school, just to an intermediate school, the timing of parental arrival really just went back to back, whereas you had a longer, you know, period of time between the two schools' arrival and drop-off. So you didn't have the saturation in the area at those different times of the day, you know. So we're just trying to get, you know, somewhat creative and, you know, try to, try to handle a need that we think would benefit the schools, but could also benefit the community, you know, the town, you know, when they have different events, they're always looking for overflow parking areas. So we're just, yeah, we're just trying to be, be creative and proactive.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, moving on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Also, in a previous meeting, we talked about the generosity of Staples and that they had donated five hundred pencil boxes full of school supplies to Bryn Mar and Packerchog. Last Friday, Staples did donate another six hundred pencil boxes full of school supplies to Swanson Road Intermediate School. And within each pencil box, there were nineteen different items. So, again, just a huge thank you to Staples. Again, a huge thank you to Kristin Pappas, who picked them all up for us and dropped them off. And we have a lot of very happy children who are receiving free pencil boxes with supplies. So we thank Staples again for their generosity and, you know, for a lot of kids, it's a big deal, you know. And so just a nice, just a great thing for them to do, and couldn't be more thankful for their involvement in the community.
That's excellent.
We need a motion?
Yeah. To recommend.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation, one thousand one hundred pencil box from Staples with gratitude.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Thank you.
It's just wonderful.
Yeah, just a big thank you to Staples. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote. And we now move on to new business.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you know, November the third is this year's MASC, MAS joint conference. The conference begins late Wednesday afternoon, November the third, and there's a conflict with our next scheduled meeting, which is November third. So it would be my recommendation that, after looking at the calendar and consulting with Dr. Chamberlain and talking with Mrs. Wazbicki, that, that we cancel the November third meeting, and we meet at our next scheduled meeting date, which would be November the seventeenth. So I just need a motion to strike that, and we would alter the calendar on the internet and let Town Hall know.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to straighten November third from the school committee meeting schedule and resume meeting on November seventeen.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. And that's it for me right now.
All right, and we'll move on to teaching and learning. Dr. Chamberlain?
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you all again. Seems like it's been a while. I just wanted to share with you, October twelfth, we had our first full, not first full, but since school began, professional day. It was focused for the majority of professional staff on universal design for learning. It was very exciting to be talking about something and immersed in something other than COVID, quite frankly, even though I know each day there's lots of teaching and learning happening in schools. But the feedback was great, and it's really our first session on something that's gonna be a three-year journey for us, to really change how we provide all kids with what they need each day in class. So a lot of great things there. There was a lot of specialized instruction, our guidance counselors got some training in dialectical behavioral therapy, which is something we continue to focus on, social emotional learning. Some of them worked on some events and some planning for things to happen in school related to that, some specialized things around autism. So it was really a very good day. It was held all virtually. We had hoped we could have it in person, but we just thought it was a little bit too risky to bring all our staff together. So it was virtual, but it was great. So that was, that was a really good day. MCAS results were released on September twenty-first. As I don't think is a surprise to anyone, students did not score as well as they did in twenty nineteen. I almost am not sure we needed the data to tell us that that would indeed be the fact.
No.
But nonetheless, we did get the data. It is on the back of one of your sheets in the packet. Auburn students still outperform the state in all areas.
Excellent.
So that's great. Do we have work to do? Absolutely, we do. Do we have kids with learning loss and gaps? Absolutely, we do. But teachers are working really diligently. DESI has provided us with some guidance around an accelerated learning strategy. But a lot of studies done, when big things happen in places, like Hurricane Katrina, when that happened, the schools really took a remediation stance, and that's what they did. So if kids were now supposed to be in fifth grade, they were really backing up through much, much of fourth grade, before they got to the fifth grade material. And what happened was, the gap just became bigger and bigger. And so we have to continue to expose our kids to grade-level material. We have to be thoughtful about what grade-level material we're really focusing on, those most important things, and then we have to provide some remediation. But we have to be careful to just not stop and say we need to redo next, last year, because our kids are never gonna get to where they need to. So teachers are working through that in teams and in content area groups, to make sure that we're being as efficient with the content as we can, yet recognizing that kids do need some backfilling of skills that they missed from last year. And as I say all that, the priority remains the social emotional well-being of our kids. Because what we're also seeing is an uptick in some behaviors and, you know, kids really reaching out for help. And we now know that the learning has to come secondary, because we can't force the learning if they're not in a place that they're ready to learn. So we're very grateful that we have the additional social worker staff and guidance counselors that can address that. And, you know, we're doing the very best we can. But it's a very stressful time for kids, and it's a very stressful time for staff. So we keep talking about it, Casey and I bring it up every time we meet with the principals, that that's gotta be first. We have to make sure that kids feel safe, supported, and get their, you know, those primary needs met. So any questions on any of that?
I'm just gonna make a comment. There's been a lot of talk around the state and elsewhere that we shouldn't be doing MCAS testing. Way back in the old days, when I started teaching, we used to do the, I think it was the Iowa test of basic skills. And we did it in September, October. So we got results right then and there of where our students were, and you could go over them and see what you needed to do to improve the particular child's skills. And I remember having meetings with other teachers on the team and working on that. MCAS is okay, but it comes at the end. And I thought, I think it was like ninety-three when they decided to give us extra money. MCAS came as a, about because they wanted to make sure we were using the money wisely, and the way they did it was to test us and compare us with other districts. But if we ever have to give up MCAS and we can go back to something like a test of basic skills.
Sure.
I think we'd really be able to serve our students in many ways in a better way. Because if the teachers are really, I'm getting a vote from the back. If the teachers are really involved with their students and looking after them, that really gives you information you can use to better their skills, as opposed to a blanket, needs improvement, or whatever they get nowadays.
Without making the kids feel like they don't know anything.
Right.
And I will say that MCAS is not a major player in what drives our instruction.
Good.
Our, all of our classroom teachers have methods, right, it varies by level, on how they gather initial information, on what kids know and what they don't know, and what they need to know. And that happens in a variety of ways. You know, at the primary, we use DIBELS assessment through Swanson Road. We now have iReady, which we've had for several years. And last year, we expanded it from, have it from ELA to MAP as well. These are very evidence-based programs that provide a lot of good feedback. At the, at the middle school and at the secondary, they have a lot of pre- and post-tests that they've set up, and those pre, the pre-tests are designed for just that. What do these kids know, and what don't they know, and what do I need to, you know, really focus on for them. So we have a lot of things in place in the district, there's been a lot of time spent on that, because we know, you know, MCAS is information, right, it's a data point, it tells us something. But when it comes, how it comes, doesn't give us a lot of good time to use it.
No.
Right? So we do have methods in place to make sure that we do that. And our teachers are really good at doing it.
The kids really deserve to be helped.
Yeah.
When they need it.
Correct, correct.
During the course of the school year, not after the fact.
And through the chair, first of all, it's hard to disagree with my former English teacher, my former math teacher. I agree with you both, so thank you. But I will say that, you know, what, what we, what we, I mean, every district uses MCAS slightly differently. What we use it for is to look at established themes and trends over a period of time. So if we're seeing cohorts of kids, you know, because people, the, the, the common criticism you get is right. You get this information on, on kids, you get it in, you know, August of, you know, and those kids are gone.
Yeah.
What we, what we really use that data for is to identify trends. So if, for example, we see, you know, three years of children not identifying author's point of view, if we see the fact, you know, that, you know, you know, the question on, just for the sake of example, Pythagorean theorem, kids blow that three years in a row, that then gives us pause to say, well, clearly, we're not doing something right if these, if we're seeing this trend happen over a number of years. So we use it in that regard. It also helps us identify, you know, our subgroups, right? So we look at special education, you know, we look at our English language learners, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And again, the same thing. It's trend analysis. If we see they're not doing well over a period of a couple, three years, then that gives us pause to say, okay, we're not doing something right, because these bad, you know, three classes of kids are not doing well. To Dr. Chamberlain's point, right, we, so that's how we kind of look at MCAS and use that. But to your point, which is very well taken, instead of doing, say, in Iowa, where we may have even done the CATs at some point, or the Metropolitan, whatever they were, I remember sitting in the cafeteria taking them as a sixth grader.
Okay.
And third grader, so I know exactly, I remember it. Instead of doing something like that, which some school districts still do, we've instead decided to do our own homegrown assessments, our pre- and post-tests. Elementary's actually, in our meeting today, they're actually having their benchmark, their pre-test for the year. They were having their benchmark meetings on kids today.
Oh, good.
And then we'll start establishing, you know, as Dr. Chamberlain said, where are those gaps with kids, and how do we effectively get them to where they need to be and accelerate them, rather than think about it in a deficit way, which is to say, well, they've lost. You know, we hear learning loss, we hear all that type of stuff. In some cases, sure, but, you know, we think of it more as acceleration. And our kids are resilient. And I think, you know, to these MCAS scores that you see here, yeah, we did perform above the state. And, you know, yeah, when you look at different pockets of things, of course, we didn't do well in certain areas, because the kids weren't in school for eighteen months. But, but, you know, compared to, I guess, compared to where we could be, you know, we're, we're really pleased with, with the effort in, in the results. And, you know, it's, it's kudos to our faculty and our staff, who under very difficult circumstances, still stepped up. And clearly, something got into kids' heads, because, you know, if MCAS didn't show us anything, it shows us that they exhibited knowledge in areas that they need to exhibit knowledge in. So, so, yeah, but that, that's a great point. And, yeah, we're not, we don't define ourselves by MCAS, you know, we just, but it's just another data point.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great, thank you. I did share some information, this goes back to the beginning of October, it hasn't changed much, that's why it didn't change since then, around the vaccination status of students and staff. We'll continue to monitor this, you know, we continue to try and find ways that are accessible for folks. We have found that some folks just don't want to reveal what that is. And, and that's everyone's choice, you know. But we will continue to push on that. Dr. Hanfield and I are working on that, trying to make folks, you know, if they want to go through the school nurse, they can do that, it doesn't have to be through zip slip. That was just the most, you know, kind of the most efficient way for everybody. But we'll continue to work on that, and hopefully, our numbers will rise. I do know that seemingly, several parents, and I've talked to a lot of parents as I'm kind of the nursing assistant for phone calls sometimes, who have said, I told him to go, he's getting, he's gonna get an appointment, we're gonna get him to go, kind of thing. So there is some pressure there to keep kids in school by the families, and they are taking them. So hopefully, that will change.
Through the chair, I just have to say, and I know I'm very pro-vaccine, but for our kindergartners, they have to provide vaccine status and dental, like, you've had a dental cleaning. So I'm just, and I never realized that teachers didn't have to provide that information.
Yeah.
Because, you know, we could have an immunocompromised child in the classroom, who's chemo has wrecked their immune system, and if the, if the teacher isn't vaccinated, that's, that's a danger. So I guess I'm just shocked by that. But I guess that, that's just, I guess, I just never knew. And I know that there's a lot of other things going on behind the scenes that are way, something I just don't know. I'm just shocked that we don't get that info on teachers. And I do know that Worcester, if they're not vaccinated, they have to test weekly with PCR tests, starting sometime in November. I didn't know if that was something we could think about going forward. Obviously, you have a lot on your plates. I just, I just would be remiss, the public health piece of me, if I didn't say, I, I just think, you know, we check to make sure kids' teeth are clean, but, you know.
Through the chair, I totally agree. I was really saddened, honestly, just for the staff numbers, only because I see how hard you guys are working. This is. This is all you've done for 18 months. You probably don't have slept in 18 months. So, and if there's anything we can do, I mean, you want us to give you lunch once a week, like what incentive would it take, especially because our kids have less agency over whether they can get it, but our teachers do? So if there is a thing that we can do, you name it. I mean, like, I mean.
Well, I think.
Because it was, I was just, ugh.
And through the chair, and, you know, and you raise a good point, but to Dr. McCrillis' point, you know, I appreciate that point of view. And yes, I mean, we're knee-deep in it without question. There are a lot of moving pieces to this behind the scenes.
Right, exactly.
You know, we try, you know, to ask them, you know, to give us the information. Conspiracy theorists, you know, are still out there thinking that, you know, in some parts of the universe, this will be used against them. It's not. And so then that brought me to a different line of, I guess, questioning and discussion with the union earlier this week. And so I'm hopeful that we can set up somewhere where people feel comfortable, you know, letting us know one way or the other what it is. The difficulty we have, you know, it would be easy for us to pick this information if everybody lived in Auburn, but they don't. And so, you know, the other way for us to pick this information, because legally, you know, there's this well-established precedence that we can ask for this information and it needs to be supplied. And so that's what we're working through right now, the proper, you know, channels, you know, to get that information. With respect to, you know, making, you know, making, you know, a mandate that, you know, all folks need to be vaccinated, or if not, they need to test weekly, it's a bit of a slippery slope as it relates to collective bargaining. I understand, you know, people will say to me, well, the governor did it and this and that. I get that. But this is a very difficult issue. And we have to be very respectful of all sides as it relates to, you know, mandating vaccinations or mandating testing or things of that nature. There's a lot of pieces to it. And so, you know, we're very much aware of that. And we're continuing, you know, that's another part of the discussion, as I said earlier, relative to building operations that are being discussed. But we want to make sure that it's, and I know you do too, so I don't mean to imply that you're not. But we want to make sure that this is handled thoughtfully, that this is handled, you know, empathically, and that we're not offending our teaching staff. But at the same time, we do understand that there needs to be some assurances, you know, to the extent possible that, you know, that our kids are going to be safe in classrooms with teachers. So that conversation will continue. And I suspect, as we have done in the past, we have demonstrated our ability to work with the teachers in a manner that both sides are happy and satisfied with whatever the issue is. And so I'm sure we will bring this to resolution sooner rather than later. But it is very much at the forefront of our minds. And we were in a discussion with, as early as yesterday.
Through the chair, if it matters at all, if it's, if it comes down to just not wanting to be, just split into vaccinated versus not, and pool testing is an option for all staff, just a regular, on every two weeks or something at different schools. Any, I mean, it seems like anything would be better than nothing. And if that would make it less invasive feeling than you, Mr. Not Vaccinated Person, you'd swap up your nose.
But.
I know that some corporations are doing that because they don't want to ask, but they need people to come back into their buildings, so.
And I understand, and I appreciate that sentiment. But we're also talking too about collectively bargained contracts and working conditions and things like that. And so, you know, there's that element of it that we're working through. There's also that element of, you're right, you know, the stigma that some people may feel being vaccinated or, oh, you're not vaccinated. I'm seeing, just the fallout that we're seeing at the high school is very messy right now. It's uncomfortable. And quite frankly, it's sad. And what I don't want is, we're in the middle of putting that back together. And what I don't want is to see a fracture take place between the central office administration and folks in our buildings around this issue. So that's why I want to make sure that we're just, we're handling it in a very delicate manner, but one that's expeditious. And that's where we're headed right now. So I do believe the test and stay that we have in place has been tremendous asset. Our teachers, you know, it's open to all of our teachers. We've had teachers that have just have asked, hey, you know, I had a child in my classroom that was positive. Can I, they're not in close contact, you know, can I go get tested? Absolutely. Go down and go ahead. And so, so I think as more people are being, seeing, understanding what that process looks like too, I think that might help move this a little bit further along. This discussion really was geared to take place in September relative to how we approach, you know, the staffing with this. But with the test and stay being delayed two months, two and a half months, it was hard to really have a thoughtful discussion around, you know, options. You know, the city of Worcester had test and stay in place very early, whereas we did not. And so I'm hopeful now that that's in place and people are seeing how that works, that that's going to help us push this conversation along so that we can have some assurances that I think would make everybody maybe feel a little bit better.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'd just like to add that whatever you end up having to do, I support you. I was appalled by these numbers. I'm glad to hear they might be higher.
I really do, through the chair, I really do think they are. I, you know, it's, this, like, again, I can't underscore how complex this issue is with some people. And when I mean some people, I mean people that were asking for this information. I don't mean you, obviously.
Yeah.
You all understand. You know, but some of the, when we started really digging into what's going on, we know that these numbers are higher. Why aren't we being able to validate it?
Sure.
The things that were coming back to us, yeah, I was really surprised. I was surprised that, I was surprised that the number of folks that were not comfortable putting it into ZipSlip. Why, I don't know. But I understand and I respect their opinion, whatever, or feelings. And I think that's the place that we're operating from right now, is that we don't want to lose that mutual respect for people's feelings on this issue. And so that's what we're doing. We're in the process now of trying to tease through that and figure out how we get that information. So, so, yeah, so, but we'll get it. We'll get it.
So we might get another report in a couple of weeks on this?
Yeah, I mean, yeah. You know, Beth and I, you know, our plan is to, in the conversation, you know, the conversations that have been had would be that we would get this information, you know, as close to November 1st as possible. And then, because we do need to send this information to the state as well. So.
Oh.
I don't think anybody was.
Sorry about that. That's okay. We'll deal with that later. Yeah, so we were aiming to have this information as close to November 1st as possible. We should definitely, I mean, by the next time we meet, November the 17th, we should definitely have that in some other discussion around some of the issues that we talked about tonight. So we're continuing to work on it.
I agree, Gail. I thought that the numbers would be a little bit higher. And also, I can understand where you're coming from, Dr. McCrillis, and even Dr. Hanfield, and the way that you need to handle this. This is, this whole thing has been divisive enough throughout the state, throughout the country. I don't think we need to divide anymore within our schools. So I'm sure that you're handling that quite well. And I understand, I don't understand the lack of vaccinations, but I do, as you said, I also appreciate that everyone has a right. And they also have a right to be able to come to school and not be scrutinized by the other six people in the teacher's room or the other three people in their classroom. And I've seen that. Well, what do you mean, you're not vaccinated? Why wouldn't you get vaccinated? Well, they might have a number of reasons why they didn't want to be vaccinated. And that's going to cause a rift within the schools. That's the last thing that we need around our students. Especially when we're trying to keep things rolling through this COVID period. I totally understand your point, though. If that was my child.
Yeah. But then again, I have to say, I work in healthcare, so I can't. I don't work as a teacher, so.
I think the only saving grace that we have with that is, actually, all staff, but especially our nursing staff are doing a phenomenal job on following up on everything. And I'm sure if there was someone who was compromised, immunocompromised, or however you put it, from your health standpoint, I'm sure the nurse would make sure that they dug, he or she dug a little bit deeper into this and said, you know what? This child's not going into a classroom unless we can be sure. And that's just, that's my take. I mean, from a legal standpoint, I don't know how that happens, but I'm sure there's going to be a larger conversation that's going to take place coming out of the nurse's office regarding that.
We have had situations throughout the years that I've been in Auburn with immunocompromised kids for a variety of reasons. And there's a lot of extensive, you know, work that goes into that particular classroom and anyone that child's going to be exposed to.
Sure.
To make sure that we're keeping the child as safe as possible.
Agreed.
And I do agree, I think these numbers are higher. You know, we had some of the football team, when the time came, and they're like, oh, I'm vaccinated. Well, okay, well, we don't know that, you know? And I think that's, there are a lot of kids like that, you know, that they are, and staff as well. They're just not, I don't know what it is, but they're just not sharing. So we're going to keep poking at it.
Yeah, and I think the other element that insert that makes this conversation more difficult, well, I shouldn't say more difficult, makes this, makes the conversation a little more tenuous, is now you're starting to see vaccinated people who are positive. And so you're hearing, you know, so that's the other side of this too, is you get people who say, well, it's fine, I can get vaccinated, but I can still be positive, you know, and still be subject to the same other elements of it. So it's not, it's just not an either-or situation. It's just, it's just very difficult. It's very complicated. And, yeah, I just, at this point, we're just going to continue to move through it. But it's difficult. There's no way about it. No two ways about it.
And just to echo Holloway's sentiments, yeah, you have my full support, and I think you have the full support of this committee. No matter what goes down, we know that you are always trying to do what's best for students, what's best for the residents, what's best for all involved. So, you know, for the few people that try to come at us, come at the district, come at the school committee, or come at any of our staff, including yourself, Dr. Chamberlain, and the entire staff, you know, shame on them. Because may, as I said, there's going to be things that we agree with and disagree. And that goes out there to town. This is a very divisive issue. But in the end, as I said a few meetings ago, we're always trying to do what we think is best. So if you disagree with that, that's fine. We'll try to be respectful.
Yeah.
Yep. Thank you for that, Mr. Scobie.
Absolutely.
Okay, moving on.
Test and stay. Finally. So we began last Wednesday. These numbers are already, I had to have this sent to Mandy last week, but we're well over 200 tests having been conducted in the schools. It's working very well. Kids come into school, they go right to the test and stay area. The staff has been there to conduct the tests. Staff is available throughout the day. So we have had situations where around 11 o'clock, we find out that this, you know, someone at home reporting they're positive. They might have been in school the day before. We're identifying the close contacts. If we have consent or can get consent from the family to test them, they go right down and they begin the testing process. So, you know, I hate to say it, but so far, so good. And it's really keeping a lot of kids in school.
Good.
And largely negative. We did have one student test positive today through the test and stay program. Student was isolated, removed from the school. They'll now get a PCR test, because these are rapid tests, right? So they're not the most reliable. They'll get a PCR test, and then we'll see where we go with the student after that. So it's just gone really swimmingly well, honestly. I just, I hate to even say it because I feel like I'm going to jinx it, but the staff has been great. The nurses have a system for getting them the names they need to test and getting the kids down. So everybody's chipped in and it's really, 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 really helped to keep our kids in school. So that's a, that's a good thing to report.
That was one piece that I left out, is that that's really the bottom line, outside of us trying to do what's best for everyone. That's, we always have the best intentions, but that's our number one goal, is keeping the students in school. That's it. That's all we've ever wanted to do. So we're doing it the best way that we know how. That's it. We don't know a better way. You might think you have a better way. We're following whatever science that we believe is the most accurate and that is going to keep the kids in school. So that's just another point that I forgot to make before you just made it for me. Thank you.
Let's keep our schools open. That's what we're all about.
Exactly, yep.
And, you know, we can't forget that, like, it's keeping our children fed, because last year, we had a mechanism in place to get food at home to kids that couldn't come into school. We don't have that in place now. So, you know, there's more than just math class that, you know, for us.
Agreed.
That's it for me. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And now, after what was a little bit somber of a conversation, I'm going to pick it up a little bit. Business and financial.
Okay, we're going to start dancing. Good evening, everyone. So for the business and financial report tonight, happy for you to copy in your packets of the 2027 capital improvement plan. As the town does, we have a five-year capital improvement plan. So on, we're starting for fiscal year 2023, we're working, starting to work on the budget and getting ready for 2023 to happen. And so they wanted 2027. Mr. Fahey and I had provided the 2027 CIP, and as requested by the town manager, and just, it requires your approval. So we put this together for 2027.
I would entertain that motion.
Make the motion to approve the 2027 CIP as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
Okay, and next, I have the 2023 CIP. Basically, it's just an update. There were a few changes in the language. We're not, we're no longer going to be leasing items like iPads and coffee machines. We will now be buying them outright, so I wanted to just correct that language, because that's the 2023 that we'll be voting at May town meeting for CIP. And I also need your approval on that as well.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the 2023 CIP as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?